Welcome. It's City Council Special Meeting of November tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Please get a roll call. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Present.
Mayor Lay. Councilmember Hamilton. Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Hey, will you join me for the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, infinite and just as far. All right. We have a number of things on our calendar tonight. The first is a joint meeting with our Open Space Advisory Board, OSAB. And this is on for discussion and direction on open space acquisition priority list and policy. And I think we have a staff report tonight. A staff report?
I'm happy to introduce Susan, our Chair of OSAB, who will be presenting the materials in your packet tonight to share concerns of the board for discussion and direction tonight.
Excellent. Thanks.
Hello, everyone. I'm Susan McCacker, and Chair of the Open Space Advisory Board, and I'm delighted to be with you here tonight. And I'm just so pleased that we're going to have the opportunity to really communicate directly with City Council as a group and as individual members. We feel that we have taken the responsibility as one of our primary priorities to evaluate potential open space acquisitions and trail corridor acquisitions since really the inception of the Open Space Advisory Board. And essentially, what I'm going to do tonight is really explain to you or just go over how we have developed this process over time and what sort of input we would really love to have from City Council. Since nineteen ninety-five, the Board has, on a biennial basis, gone to chosen properties to evaluate and has taken a field trip to look at all those properties in person. And the public and City Council members are always welcome to come along on those trips. I know Mayor Lay has gone with us on an occasion. And I think he can attest to the fact that it's a very careful and thorough and thoughtful evaluation of the properties that we look at. We get an introduction from Ember at each stop, and she tells us a little bit about the property and what its situation is. And then we, sometimes we walk the property, we sometimes we look at it from a distance, depending on the status of the property. And the criteria for evaluation have evolved over time. There have been many changes in the makeup of the advisory board. And so every advisory board comes up with its own set of criteria that it wants to use to evaluate the properties. We have tried to simplify the process with help from Diana Langley because we feel like we don't want to overwhelm City Council with too much information. And that's something that we would really like to have a conversation about tonight is how much information you really want from the advisory board. You know, do you really want us to inundate you with every single thing that we have pulled together, or do you really want an overview that has a very high-level analysis? And I just want to point out that we have this responsibility under the Home Rule Charter to evaluate these open space potential acquisitions. And our goal is really to provide City Council with timely, research-based information and analysis to aid your discussion on pursuing potential acquisitions. However, it's been a number of years since City Council and OSAB have sat down together and really talked about what you would like to see from us and what would be helpful for us to provide to you. So that's our main impetus tonight. Another thing that I have done as Chair of OSAB is implemented a yearly review of potential properties. We don't do the onsite visit every year. We just do that on a biennial basis. But we do try to, since it's a very dynamic situation and property, properties change, what properties are potentially available change. So we devote one of our monthly meetings to an internal discussion of whether and how we want to update that property list. And you can see here, this is the existing open space parks and trails map for your reference. And I'll go quickly on to this, which is the overlay of our ranking map. And this year, we really did try to reduce the number of properties that we considered high priority as part of that simplification process. Let's see, I'm gonna go. And here you'll see our spreadsheet that lists our top priorities. And again, we were, we tried very hard to keep it to a very manageable number so that you would have an easy snapshot of what we've been looking at. The first is, is what we call BB. It's right on Coal Creek Business Park land, west of Dillon, north of Coal Creek Trail. It's a small but really high-value riparian parcel with rich habitat, trail connectivity, and strong conservation potential as a buffer against nearby commercial development. And this is something that is very important to OSAB as a whole, is protecting the Coal Creek riparian area. You know, that's such a valuable resource, not only for Louisville, but for surrounding communities, Superior and Lafayette and beyond. And it's just such a rich form of biodiversity and both for plant and animal life. So you'll see that recurring as one of our themes throughout. A new property this year is what we call the baseline horse property. It's a Lafayette, potentially a Lafayette property. It's currently an unincorporated Boulder County. But a couple of years ago, a developer asked Lafayette to annex it for development, and a new property owner has just repeated that request to Lafayette. So the last time this happened, there was a lot of citizen pushback against that, and Lafayette decided not to annex the property. This, we consider a very high priority because it is adjacent to existing open spaceland. It has a lot of rich habitat. It's really a beautiful parcel on its own right. And it's really one of the last big parcels available. And it seems like a really good opportunity for Louisville, Lafayette, and Boulder County to cooperate because it really affects all three of those governments. So we hope that you'll take a chance to, if you aren't familiar with this property, we hope you'll get a chance to take a look at it. You can access it from Keith Hellart Park through the trail corridor that goes to the north there, but it's something that we hope you'll consider carefully. And we know that Lafayette's Open Space Advisory Council is also putting a very high priority on this property as well. And that's something that we have tried to do more outreach with our neighboring communities and their open space boards. We had a meeting earlier this year with Lafayette that was really useful for identifying issues that were of mutual concern. And in two days, we'll be having the similar meeting with the Superior Board. So, you know, we obviously, as you know, from the Marshall Fire and from many other issues, we share a lot of common interests with both of those communities. ZZ1 is just southwest of GHX, and it's another access point to Davidson Mesa. And that's another area that even though it doesn't really have the riparian value of Coal Creek, it's such an important part of Louisville's identity. Davidson Mesa is used both by people within the community and people in surrounding communities. It's used for people walking their dogs, for high schools and colleges running teams to do their workouts, you know, people for bird watching, for hiking, for bike riding. So we would love to see some of the adjoining properties considered for, as a way to enhance that Davidson Mesa property. And that would be both something that could be a developer dedication. You can see that we have our acquisition strategies listed here. And we're not always saying, oh, please just buy it outright. You know, there are a lot of opportunities for conservation easements, for joint purchases with Boulder County and other municipalities, for trail, just for partial dedication through the development process. So there are a whole range of ways that you can be thinking about enhancing our open space properties and the ways that people in our community can use those properties. Another is WW. This has strong trail connectivity to Davidson Mesa Centennial in South Louisville. And it's, it really complements WW1, which is the next parcel that we're talking about. So these, again, are Davidson Mesa adjacent properties. Another important property on our list is what we call the Red Barn property. And that does have a conservation easement on it right now. But we feel that it would be a really valuable property to consider, both because of its riparian value and its historical value, and the fact that the conservation easement does allow two additional properties to be, two additional houses to be added to that property. So keeping it intact as a historical property, I think, is a really important aspect of considering that for some sort of open space acquisition. We also put back on DD, which was the Avista Hospital North property. We did have a quasi-judicial discussion about this recently, and the hospital has agreed to add to that, that portion, part of the portion that we have identified as high priority. But there's some additional portions of it that were not included. So we just wanted to keep that on the list and hope that, once the hospital proper is gone from that property, there'd be the potential to add a trail into that section that would connect with the US 36 Trail. So I want to talk a little bit about the property acquisition, the proposed acquisition process. We did this in conjunction with the city manager. And this is just a flow chart that gives you a good idea of how our process moves forward and how we communicate with staff, and then how we send that material on to City Council, and then City Council's decisions going forward. One element that we did take out of this flow chart was the hope that some OSAB members could be included in executive sessions, and the city attorney felt that that was not going to be allowed under the city charter. So that is something that we would still love to see, to be able to have some way of communicating with City Council when you are in the process of thinking about properties that you're developing. So I would just ask, let's keep thinking about ways that we could make that happen and improve the communication between OSAB and City Council. And then that really covers what I wanted to say. I think next, we really just want to talk about direction from City Council on how you would like to work with us, what you would like to see from us in addition to the materials I've just shared with you. That very, you know, compared to some past OSAB materials that you've received, this is a really slimmed-down version. So if you go back to past ones, or we can share past ones with you, you know, we're happy to provide more detail if you would like that. If you like this more overview format, we're happy to stay with that. But we'd really welcome your thoughts on what material you find useful for your own discussions and what ways we can better provide that.
Thanks. I appreciate, one, I appreciate all of you being here tonight. And two, we have some time for council questions about the presentation, and then we can maybe dig in, we can get some public comment, and then have some discussion amongst ourselves. But why don't we start with council questions? And I'm gonna have to rely on the city clerk to let me know if and when Councilmember Hefner is, there he is. Raising his hand because I can't see him, but now I can. Council questions? Yes, Councilmember Curran.
Thank you. Actually, thank you for this. I'm a spreadsheet person, kind of like the Mayor Protem. I actually really liked it. I thought it was super easy to read, and I appreciated actually the additional attachments which laid out the property goals. That was very helpful to me to understand where one, why one was like not selected. Because I was curious actually about all the purple ones, why you didn't like them and what was going on. I actually did have a couple of questions, though. One is more of a comment about the executive session. I believe even though we can't have residents available, a staff member is, and frequently, Director Blackmore is present for them. But Ember is also able, my understanding is, as staff to be present in those executive sessions to represent OSAB. So that should help to satisfy the concern of a member, because she's kind of a member, right, for representing staff, to come and be able to talk to us and express conversations that you all have had with her. She can convey that to us if we had a concern. Unfortunately, she can't bring it back to you until decisions finalized to public, but I think she can. I was curious, what is the conservation easement, if you know, for BB?
For BB, I don't have those details with us here tonight, but I'm happy to look into that and provide a
Okay, great. That'd be awesome. I'd love to. Oh, it says on here that there's an existing conservation easement. Says yes. So that's why I thought I was curious. And it's been undeveloped for a long time. That's that, like, area behind Premier Members?
I don't believe, that might be a mistake in our spreadsheet, but I don't believe
Oh, okay. Okay. I wasn't familiar, but that's great. And so the other thing is, so happy you guys are meeting with Lafayette, OSAB, and Superior. That's awesome, especially the Lafayette with the Coal Creek Trail connections. I've often said, I love what they have done in the last, like, five, six years along Coal Creek, and I wish that Louisville had done some similar things, and we just, we haven't. Signage and what have you and usability, but also like really protecting and like information about why the community's protecting the space. It's always nice for the public who enters that space to know, not just the members of the OSAB Board and Council. But the OO, have you, have you guys reached out to the Boulder County? I'm glad that Lafayette's on board, but have you talked with Boulder County Open Space about that yet?
Okay.
But hey, Ember, have you, because I know that you guys' staff work with and communicate with Boulder County.
We have recently reached out to Lafayette and heard about their status, but we have not reached out to Boulder County Parks and Open Space on this parcel specific, since Lafayette would typically take the lead based on location.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks again. It was awesome. I actually like, you asked like our comment, like, what do we like, and if this is good, I think it's good. It's very comprehensive without being like, you know, taking me four hours to go through. So it was great. Thank you.
I know you guys have a lot of material to get through on a weekly basis. So we're trying to be a very small part of that.
Other council members have questions? Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
So there's sort of three general criteria for when you're evaluating the different properties: natural resource value, user experience, and strategic value. I was just curious, so those have been chosen by OSAB, or has there been input from elsewhere for those criteria?
They have sort of evolved over time through OSAB's own discussion. You know, as different members have come and gone from the board, different elements have become more or less central to the discussion. So it's really just whatever the current board members want to use as their evaluation criteria.
Okay, so the charter doesn't really?
No.
Yeah, that's fine. And then I'm also curious, particularly the sort of the flow chart about acquisition, do we have a sense for how that compares to what the county does, or what maybe Lafayette does?
The county has a completely non-public process. They do not release or make public any of their, the parcels that they're interested in because they don't want to potentially inflate the price that they would have to pay. So all of that is done in executive session. So there's no public list of potential properties or any public discussion about those properties. Lafayette follows a pretty similar situation to ours. They do have a direct link with their city manager. So when they are discussing open space potential properties, they have a meeting directly with the city manager as opposed to with the city council.
And as a follow-up, I mean, do we have concerns, or do you think we should have concerns like the county does about, you know, if we're public about our interests or whatever?
I mean, I think that's a very valid question. But we would have to change the city charter to operate in that fashion. You know, right now, OSAB's meetings are open to the public, so our discussions are open to the public. So, you know, it's certainly something to think about, but it would be a very large change to affect the way we operate in that fashion. But several years ago, before my time on OSAB, Ember convened a meeting with, you know, experts through the city of Boulder and Boulder County about how they manage their open space acquisitions. And I would really love to reconvene one of those sessions and actually invite City Council members in on that. I think it would be, you know, they have so much more funding available to them. So they have a much larger staff who are looking into these things, who are managing these things. But I think that we have good lessons to learn because they really do have so many more resources and so much more expertise than we're able to have in our small town.
Thanks. Other council members? Mayor Protem? Councilmember Hefner? Any questions? I've got a few questions. With respect to the acquisition process that you've laid out, and I appreciate you're putting work into this and thinking, thinking through some of these issues, what, what's the urgency of doing a policy?
And of creating an acquisitions policy? We on OSAB, and I would welcome everyone else on OSAB to weigh in here, feel that if we were to have a, that if council were to direct staff on how they wanted the acquisitions process to be run through staff, we would have a much more cohesive and logical process. And that, right now, there are some personal relationships between staff and individual property owners, but there's no really formalized system for managing that relationship with potential property, people who might be interested in selling or providing an easement. And, you know, staff can leave, and then that relationship is gone. So we just feel that having something that was more sustained and formalized in place would be really helpful toward managing and guiding the acquisitions process. And also just having that council feedback for us, guidance for us on a little, you know, a little more formalized on how you would like us to be considering our open space prioritization process.
I mean, one of the things that I took away from what you just said a little bit ago is, has to do with transparency. It sounds like OSAB is interested in even more transparency. That is, discussions between, well, I'm not sure, discussions between who, but the suggestion was that council have some contact with, with property owners, is that?
I would think it's more that staff would have that contact.
And the perception is right now that they don't?
There's no, I would think that Ember can speak to this, but I think that they, staff doesn't feel that they have that direction from council to take that step.
Well, I'll ask Ember, what's your thought about that?
Well, I would say historically, our process has been, as you all know, if a property becomes available, we reach out to the director and the city manager who convenes with council in executive session to discuss that property. As Susan said, we do have some staff relationships with homeowners, so conversations have come up with the homeowner typically bringing it to the city. But city staff rarely reaches out proactively to homeowners at my level, but perhaps at the city manager and director level. So I will let them add to that if they would like to.
I think Ember's correct. It's based upon people reaching out to the city, expressing interest, or us becoming aware of a property that may be available, and then contacting. But there's not a proactive approach to contact property owners, just to see their level of interest and having a conversation with the various tools that are out there. And I think that the council communication report does a good job of explaining all the different tools that are available, from first right of refusal to conservation easements, all the way down to fee ownership.
I mean, do you think that there's, that we need a policy in place for the, I don't know, the practice? Let's put it distinguished between practice and procedure?
I would say yes, that I do think that would be very useful to have something that everyone can draw on and have be on the same page about how we're moving forward. And one thing I would add to that, that would be very helpful for OSAB, is we haven't always known, for instance, if there's a right of first refusal on a property. So having that information flow to our board would be really useful as part of our decision-making process. You know, for instance, the property on Cherry and, Right When Cherry Turns Into Cherry, you know, that was, you know, the city had a right of first refusal on that, but we didn't know that that was the case. And, you know, that would have changed our thinking about how we evaluated that property.
One other, I think I understand that. I'm sort of thinking through how that works, and we can talk, council can talk with one another here about this in just a minute. But, you know, the more, there's a important part of open space that's, you know, I mean, it's in the charter. We have, we have a process that is specified there. Obviously, it's a fundamental value of the community because, partly because of that, it's a fundamental value, that's why it went into the charter in the first place. But, you know, the closer you get to acquisition, the more information you are sharing with the public, in many ways, the higher the price goes when you are thinking about potential acquisition. And it's, you know, it's just something that has to be balanced, but we can, we can talk about that in a minute. Do you think in any of this, in the process of setting this list of priorities, that cost ought to be a factor? That is, the cost of the potential acquisition?
That's a really good question. In the past, council has directed OSAB not to consider cost, to really base it solely on the other values that the property offers, because they didn't want us to be intimidated by price or say, oh, you know, that's too expensive. because they didn't want us to be intimidated by price or say, oh, you know, that's too expensive. So we're just going to take it off the list. So that's really up to council. If you want us to consider price, we will add that into our list of criteria.
Yeah, I mean, it may be something that council, I mean, we can have that discussion amongst ourselves too. The why not, unless there's other questions from other council members, why don't we, why don't we get some public comment?
Okay.
And we'll come back. Do we have?
First up is Tanya Samaru, followed by Larry Donner.
Okay. Okay, Tanya Samaru. So I just want to say firstly, Louisville residents clearly value our open space. And moving forward, our open space policy must evolve alongside our housing and affordability goals of the city. We recently had a landslide election where residents provided a clear mandate on affordability and attainability to the city government. And of course, there are some potential conflicts that I outlined in an email a few days ago to council between OS acquisition and and housing. And I explained that the three hundred three oh one organizers have been paying a lot of attention to this acquisition process and trying to speed it up. So I just want to point out that there is a huge structural imbalance in our government in that open space has its own citizen board, regular meetings, they get to come meet with you. They have feedback to your work plan, all kinds of things. And housing advocates don't have any of that. They just get occasional council and staff attention, and it's just another thing on Rob Zikar's plate to do. So there's no budget or clear clear plan to implement any of the goals in the housing plan. So the concerns are that the priority acquisition recommendations need to stick to open space related priorities. And they should not be reading, in my opinion, open space advocacy board should not be reading parcels to prevent development. And I complained in my email to council previously that some things were said at a meeting I attended last month that some people wanted to bump up the rankings to prevent housing from being built on some parcels. And I also heard very reasonable voices from the board that they heard what Mayor Protem said recently in a meeting about we have forty percent open space in the city of the city of the city land area, and maybe we don't need to do this. You know, maybe we only need to acquire to just add, you know, acquire open space in special circumstances. So there were definitely board members who seemed very well aware and mindful about the housing and the need for council to balance these things. So I'm going to propose some potential guardrails that might help. One thing is to please instruct and recommend that the board only make recommendations based on the actual value of the open space and not about preventing housing. The word buffer is sometimes used as a proxy for anti-growth. When we talk about buffers, we should be describing measurable ecological function and explain exactly what is being protected by buffer. We're not buffering development, we're buffering the impacts of development on open space. And that's how it should be discussed, exactly what are you buffering? The only justification is proximity reviews, that's not conservation, it's obstruction. Housing, can we get the the planning department to weigh in on every parcel and say, how would acquiring this parcel impact our housing plan and our goals? If we acquire, you know, one of the Centennial Valley properties, are we likely to meet our goals now? And finally, can you please quantify the maintenance backlog for open space? It is huge, from what I understand. And more open space means less resources for current open space. So can we please get the full cost when we are acquiring open space to restore the habitat to whatever it should be native and then to to maintain it? Like, we need the full lifecycle costs before we decide to acquire open space. So thank you.
Next up is Larry Donner.
Hello, my name is Larry Donner. I live on Willow Place. I'm here with a simple suggestion. I would like to suggest all open space meetings, the open space board meetings, be recorded and transcribed so that council might have better background if there are questions on how strategies developed. I was concerned when the board chair said the Cobal property should be bumped up quickly because it might be turned into the sacrificial lamb for affordable housing. I was also concerned when a board member said, why are we purchasing property with conservation easements? And the chair said, because they can build too many houses and that's too many. That I found to be a little bit disconcerting. So I'm not sure whether the goal is to prevent housing or to protect the wildlife in in our community. And the other thing I I just want to mention was while we were there, there was misinformation by the chair that everyone whose home was burned wants to either sell all the open space or mow it down to an inch and a half and that it's a scorched earth policy against open space. First, it's absolute misinformation. Amber's doing a terrific job turning it into Colorado Prairie. And secondly, I am still appalled at the scorched earth policy statement, given how insensitive it is to those of us who lost our homes. So again, with that, I would urge council to have all the meetings recorded and transcribed so that council and other interested parties could find out what actually happens at these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, seems like the ball comes back to us. One thing that's probably worth chatting about for a minute, I guess, I it's it's not sort of technically thing we do in all cases, but it is, this is a joint meeting. I guess if there are responses from the committee to the comments that were made and or further comments, further comments from open space about the questions, perhaps those would be useful for us to get right now, if there are any, if there aren't any, that's fine.
Well, I would just like to say, first of all, that I never said that the Cobal pop property should be moved up so that it couldn't be, housing couldn't be built on it. And I never said that the Red Barn property should be ha- should be purchased so that it couldn't have many houses built on it. I did mention the fact that there were two additional houses that could be built on it so that that would be one reason to consider it for purchase beyond just the conservation easement. And Larry, I do want to apologize, as I did before, for saying the scorched earth comment. That was really out of line and I I do apologize for it. And what I I intended to convey is that there is a small group of Marshall fire victims who who really feel that the open space was responsible for the extent of the fire and that they want to see much, much less vegetation on open space. And I wasn't trying to convey that that's true of every Marshall fire victim, but there is a vocal group who really feels that open space should be should be minimized as much as possible. So I apologize again for making that statement. It really was insensitive of me. But the other statements, I, you know, I did not say those things. And I don't know how that came across to those who were in the the meeting. But it's, it's simply not the way the the meeting went.
Anything else? Okay, why don't we talk a little bit amongst council? I guess to to frame this a bit, there are some there are some issues that I think have been brought up in the staff memo, which I think we can discuss. And the there are four questions which, you know, as coun- council members, we sometimes go through all of these questions and sometimes we don't. These are just sort of things we choose to to do. But I really appreciate your taking the time to to ask these. One is discussing the biennial OSAB acquisition evaluation process and to provide a little bit of guidance there. Another one is direction on opportunities for future council engagement with OSAB regarding land acquisition priorities. The third is coordination regarding acquisition between city council, city manager's office, community development, and Parks, Rec, and Open Space and OSAB. And then finally, di- di- direction to staff on OSAB's recommended open space acquisition policy. So I guess at this point, I would invite council, you know, you're welcome to to start us off on any of those, if you like, or however you'd like. Yes, Councilmember Curran.
Thank you. Appreciate all the comments. I, Mayor, I actually liked your comment about bringing up cost as part of the the evaluation process. And I think because we we are dedicating an amount every year from the tax base to the acquisition, I think it it should be mindful to all of us that that's going to put up, put us up against a wall of what we can spend. And so prioritizing by price and what we, and I think is probably a good idea. But I think the other piece of cost is, as Tanya mentioned, we really have to consider the short term, like restoration costs and the long term maintenance cost, whether that requires additional staff, because that's a very expensive maintenance cost if it's a certain type of property. But maybe it's a piece of property adjacent to open space that makes it really inexpensive to maintain. It could be something as simple as, you know, it just has like one more or a couple more hours of open spaces time because they're already there doing a lot of the maintenance and management of it. So that, I think of the the property down by Coal Creek, actually, that probably doesn't have the conservation easement on it as something, okay, that maybe it would be easier to maintain. She's like, I looked. So yeah, so I think I think that's actually a good suggestion that 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 consider because that will ultimately be something that I think the all the members of council are going to have to think about. So if something is substantially more expensive, then what's going to be in the budget in the next, let's say, ten years? Ask me a hard thing to buy because that's going to take a lot of money from a lot of other things. And but I I really appreciate the the comment too. I like the idea of maybe the planning department or community development having one of the columns in here about the value we have it from open space for like the property goal. Maybe this would be valuable for your team, Rob, to to take a look and see what their thought is for that property. And it could be that you come to some similar conclusions, like with some of the the low value, like property seat on the map, that, yeah, the great potential for a lot of other things. But I think that would be helpful in the decision-making processes to what we want to tell the city manager as far as the value of it.
Good, yes. Member Tim.
Thanks, yeah. This is great, the presentation's great. And the work that OSAB does is is super important. And so this first question around like discussing the evaluation process, you know, I think it is hard because it's not, you know, it it's not two dimensional, right? There are like all these things to consider. And so sometimes I'm caught thinking, well, OSAB shouldn't really consider whether this is like valuable for economic develop. Like, your job is to be like, is it valuable for open space? And and then we as a council go, okay, I see that you value it for open space until I get that. And there's another need that might might be as important or less important or more important. And we're balancing that. But to ask OSAB to say, well, but did you think about, you know, if this is better for housing than open space? So I I kind of battle with that, but I think like the perfect property, right, is huge, free, right, currently has no limits on what can happen on it, right? And is it is perfectly located, you know, for, but even that, like location, like, is it perfect that it's located next to open space? Or gosh, we already have open space there. Is it as important to add to a current open space as is to get a new one, right? And so sometimes a battle with that. But but so if it's if it's really tiny and really expensive and already has a lot of restrictions on it, well, that seems like a pretty low priority for us. Although the location might be like super important, but like all those things do matter. They do matter, that the price matters, the size matters, and then the impact on the community and how how they'll use it, right? And so, you know, I think this process is important, but I think it's incredibly complicated and very subjective. And so I, and then and then at the end, we can't have like private conversations about it very easily. And then we don't want to tell anyone what we thought because then we'll inflate prices. It's just a really tough tough dynamic. But I'm not personally like, you know, offended when OSAB targets a lot that I might mentally be targeting for affordable housing, like that's an okay conflict. We both want things that are important. And and that piece of land, of course, could be used in ten ways. And so that's okay, it's okay for for us to differ on on maybe the best use of that particular land. But I I do think it's important that OSAB is independent of some of those thoughts and is really just advocating for for that. And as we talked about some of those like comments that we got from the public too, is that, you know, is this, is this anti-growth? Like, we just don't want to see houses in that area? Or is it for animals and and migrations and and connections and things like that? Because it it can be hard to see a house built somewhere where a house wasn't before. But does that alone like make that property valuable as open space? Like, so I think some of those those things are, I mean, we all live on open space, right? Every one of us, if you live in Louisville, one moment in the past, that was not a lot, right? So we have all built our homes on open space in some way, shape or form, myself included. So, you know, we we live in a city, it's important to figure out what the best uses are. But, you know, I I think having a more iterative process where, you know, you guys make your list, we look at that list, we think about that and potentially give feedback. But, you know, our attorney, who's not here right now, but you know, city manager, that that conversation's hard. And that I think that's what's really hard for me is that that conversation's hard to have because it's not a good one for a public meeting and yet, you know. So I think there's opportunity for some more collaboration with, you know, the executive session strategic, the allowance for some strategic conversation executive session for you guys to get. Like, I can't tell you why we do or don't want something, I can't. Like, I had, I talked about in executive session, I can't come back and tell you about it. And that makes it really hard. It's like this game of secrets, but without intention there. So I think there's some improvement to be had there. And then and then, yeah, I mean, the the elephant in the room and I'll, and then I'll stop is that, yeah, that piece for me of, you know, open space doesn't pay for itself, right? It's this joker, this comment about residents don't pay for themselves, open space definitely doesn't, right? So as a community, we can't just keep adding and adding and adding open space if we don't have the funds to care for it. And all of our residents have to pay to care for these spaces and we're getting more with Redtail and others. So I just don't want to bite off more than we can chew when it comes to maintaining all of this because there are lots of great opportunities. And if we waved a magic wand and got them all, how how are we going to maintain it all? That would be really tough. And so that's not going to happen. But but I do worry about us just continuing to add into our inventory without a strategy for maintaining it. So all of that, like I said, I'm I'm done now. I super support open space. I grew up in Boulder, I was born in Boulder. I love, is that like, why is that so funny? Yeah, I grew up in Boulder and and obviously moved here a long time ago and I I benefit from it. I appreciate it. It is something I grew up to understand is important. So I am not saying like, no, open space is dumb, it's amazing. And I appreciate everyone who came before me that created so much of it. And I'm just trying to be a good steward of what we have now and what what's a responsible way to grow it and maintain it.
Yes, Councilmember V.
Thank you, yes, I'll reiterate what's been said. What the open space board does is amazing and what they've accumulated for the city in their recommendations for what we should purchase and how we should maintain it has just been phenomenal. I'm very pleased with the amount of open space that we already have. I wish we had more funds to maintain what we have and to purchase more and then maintain that. That's my big question right now is I'm wondering how we can continue to maintain open space if we're adding to it and our budget is not going up. And I'm wondering, Director Blackmore, if we have any results from the open house on what the on what the public would like to see regarding open space purchase, maintenance, or whatever they would like to see.
We have preliminary results. The consultant, we just met with them today, they're compiling everything into an easy to read format, and that'll be shared with council at the January 6 meeting.
Okay. So you can't give us a little snapshot?
The preliminary results are is that the feedback we receive so far tends to lean to taking care of what we have. But there is a healthy mix of all opinions.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cooperman and then Councilmember Heffner.
Let's start with a question. You know, so if we, let's say, we did want to have OSAB consider cost, say upfront cost for acquisitions, you know, is it? How feasible is it to actually provide that information, some kind of cost estimate?
I think that there's several tools to be able to evaluate that. Number one, there's the assessors valuation. Number two, if council directed, we could go out and get a broker's opinion of cost to see what it could be. There's there's not a lot of properties on the list. There could be a potential cost associated with that with engaging with the broker. But I think that's part of the process that they're wanting to see is us engaging with a broker to understand the opportunities that are out there.
And then as a follow on, I actually have a question for the board. You know, I mean, how would you feel about evaluating properties on that basis?
So I'm Andy Dorsey, and I'm the vice chair of the board. And I have sort of a budgeting and finance background. So when I came in, the very first thing I wanted to do was evaluate the properties by cost. And then, as we started talking about it, I got disabused of that notion because I think we realized, sort of like the Mayor Pro Tem said, that in some ways there's a whole bunch of factors that are involved that are outside of our purview that really is the council has to weigh the considerations. And so probably the best we can do is make recommendations based on the open space value of the properties. And and I would just note, this is a little bit of a side comment in response to some of the public comments. But having been part of the board, the focus of the conversations in both years has really been on the open space values of the properties, particularly protecting riparian habitat, creating sort of corridors for wildlife with other habitat. And we've really looked hard at whether properties have any any value in that respect. I will say, you know, we have sort of evaluated costs, though, a little bit. You know, in a way, like the Mayor Pro Tem said, because if you look at the properties that are not on the priority list, when we started to look at which properties had conservation easements or would probably be difficult to attain, I think that we're in the back of our mind about the prioritization process. So I don't think that we're completely oblivious to the concepts of what might be out there in the budget limitations. But we're trying to find the balance, I think, of of focusing more on the open space value of the properties. I'll let others speak for themselves.
I'm Brad Pugh. I would like to add the new list, in my opinion, is a much more pragmatic and realistic list than the old list. We did go through with an eye to, just like Andy said, remove things that maybe already had some sort of easement on it or that just from a practical standpoint wasn't realistic to obtain because there's already houses there or it has very clear development value and potentially relatively limited value as open space. So my view is this current list that you're looking at is probably about as much of a sort of clear eyed list as you'll get from open space, considering things like budgets and community needs, housing needs, et cetera. And I think we make this list thinking about the decades to come. And I know you guys think about that in terms of budgets as well. But the reality is everything changes, right? Every year, every five years, every 10 years. So I think similar to what Mayor Pro Tem said, what properties do you want future generations to be looking at and thinking, wow, I'm really glad they were visionary and thought about purchasing those and setting those aside so that we do have these beautiful buffers, these beautiful places to hike, and it's not just one subdivision followed by another as far as the eye can see looking ahead to the future? That's all.
I would just like to add to that, that I think one of the things that we've tried to take into account is are there opportunities for partnership with other municipalities and with Boulder County open space? And that influences what our maintenance cost would be as well. You know, if Boulder County or Lafayette is the primary partner, they're going to be responsible for the maintenance. But we have had a role in making it possible for that property to be saved. And it's something that's important to Louisville because it adjoins our boundaries and connects to existing open spaces. So that's another way that we try to think about the overall financial cost of a of an acquisition.
Yeah. Hi, this is Machiko, board member with OSAB. Thank you to the other OSAB board members for their comments. So just one thing, you know, we have tiger teams that in the past have been responsible for writing grants requests for different aspects of open space needs, you know, maintenance needs. And it's nice to see grant money that's provided outside of the community. And thank you to Amber and her team for really, you know, spearheading some of that work in the past. I think it's really nice to see that because that helps us to see, you know, the budget, you know, with the tax, the 2C provisions that are included and so forth. It is really hard to understand how much these properties are going to go up in value and the maintenance costs that go along with them. The value of the land being worthwhile to know from a open space acquisition aspect is really important, but it's also kind of a gray area. How important does that outweigh the open space value? Sometimes, you know, we're going to say, wow, that's too expensive. We don't even want to consider it. But I think it's important to always consider sort of the ecological value of that land ir- you know, irrespective of the cost of that land. You guys should be clued in to the value or the cost of that property. Maybe it's more helpful for you to have an advisory board who does focus on the open space value of that land and that property versus the economic development value of that property and isn't considering that in the matrix. There was one thing that one of the, I think, council member Kern said about at the executive session, you know, thinking that it was potentially a good idea for at least one member of the open space advisory board to be involved in that meeting. I think that opens kind of Pandora Pandora's box sometimes. But is there a way that, yes, the meeting can retain its privacy and maybe not shared with the board in general, but also considering like, I think, you know, for the opportunity for us to be able to present the board with sort of aspects of an acquisition of a property that you may not be considering, but we are considering heavily being the open space advisory board, you know, and how can we pass that information back and forth and keep that transparent? Also, I think that when we talk about the kind of information that we're reviewing in the matrix for the open for the open space acquisition, sometimes the language that we use may not translate directly to the type of language that you want us to use or that fits your needs in making those considerations. So if there are ever any wording choices or any considerations in our discussion of these different properties that are being relayed to you that need to be changed in the wording, can you just give us that feedback so that we know how to talk about them as a board and we can support your need? All right, I think I'm done talking. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Other?
Hi. Yeah, yeah. Hi. Mark Paletti and I'm also a member of the board. Not the only thing I wanted to add, everybody said very good things that I completely agree with. But I just wanted to add one thing is, so I think the board's looking at it at the right way. There's a balance between land acquisition and open space acquisition and the maintenance to to maintain it. And and what's where do we get the funding for that? I was just going to add that there may be opportunities outside of Louisville, like joint purchases or joint costs with other communities, like other cities or the county of Boulder. Or maybe there are some grants that could be obtained as well that could be used to purchase some open space. So just wanted to add that as well. Thank you.
I guess from my perspective, I think I think it'd be most useful for open for the board to judge properties essentially on their open space value. And then sort of leave it up to staff and council to to weigh those other factors. You know, so we could, for instance, we could get the list from you and then we could ask if there are specific things we want to consider. We could have columns that staff then weighs in on and provides that information specifically for those things on the list. Anyway, one other question I had maybe for city manager. So on the in the packet where it has the flow chart, right, it says, OSAB approved city manager proposed acquisition process. So does that mean that this aspect of the process is sort of what what you think is a a good way to proceed?
So this this proposed process, it's scaled down from the the previous version that was proposed. And so I really appreciate the effort that OSAB has put into this proposed process. You and I look at this process, I don't see that it's overly onerous in terms of time or effort. I mean, the the list of properties has been pretty consistent and they've scaled it down even further. And engaging just to see if the property owner has any interest in the conversation, that's a pretty quick conversation. If the response is no, then that's easy. Or if their response is, you know, we might be willing to consider something, tell me more. You know, that's a different conversation. So I think the initial outlay of effort is going to be more just to establish the relationship. And there are resources available to us. Adam, Amber, and I met with a representative of the Conservation Fund, Conservation Trust, Conservation Fund. Fund, you know, that's one of the things that they can do as well is assist with property owner outreach. And so, you know, there are resources available. And for some of these properties, if the the owner's interested in developing, then that's the response that we'll get as well. And then we can give that to OSAB that there's no interest in considering this for open space. And so, you know, I think that this process is a good way to start the discussions and it may change over time as we, you know, work on these properties.
Councilmember Heffner.
Thank you, Mayor. And and thanks, OSAB, for joining us. Sorry, I can't be in the room with all of you. I have a few thoughts. First is, I I do think it's important to remember, in addition to the charter, we we, this group, sent to the voters two years ago, an increase to the open space tax. And one of the things we asked the voters to to let us do with that tax is acquire open space. So, you know, it wasn't that long ago that we asked for additional dedicated funding that was meant to be used at least in part for acquisition. You know, that that passed pretty overwhelmingly. And I do think we have some some obligation to honor the direction we got from the voters and use especially that additional tax money in part toward acquisition. Now, I think we've set up a reasonable mechanism for doing that with acquisition reserve. And right now, we don't, we don't have what I would call a war chest, per se. And so we're not in a position right now, at least as far as I'm concerned, where we should be going out and actively soliciting property owners, telling them we're interested in buying their property because we don't really have the funding set aside or budgeted to do it. The way I view our situation is much more opportunistic, that some of these properties, whether we like it or not, are going to come available, you know, at some point in the future. And we'll have we'll face a decision if and when they come available. Do we want to, you know, jump in and try and acquire them or do we let them be purchased? You know, presumably for development. And I think that that choice, when it sort of comes up at whatever time it comes up, is fundamentally very difficult and difficult to plan for. And so to get to the questions in the in the slide deck, I think it's really important to have the the list prepared, the list prioritized, detailed evaluation of what the merits are of the various properties on the list from an open space perspective. I'm I'm not as concerned that we need to try and guess as to what the the sale price is going to be for each of them. But the idea being, when one of these things comes for sale, we're often in a position where we have limited time to get together and make a decision, yes or no, about what to do. And the more information we have in front of us at that point in time, presumably the the better decision we can make. So I think of the the sort of the ranking and the map and the list as sort of a a reference tool or an informational tool. I was watching the the House of Dynamite on Netflix on the plane. And, right, he has the nuclear binder with all the different nuclear response options in front of him. And he's sort of trying to pick off the menu, which one do I do? I I think of this the same way. You know, we need a menu of options, a menu of priorities. And it's never going to be perfect because it's never going to answer everything we need it to answer. It's never going to answer sort of what's the trade off between doing this property now and waiting to see what might come available in the future. But more more is better than less, in my view. So all of that said, I don't, I I kind of, I I like the sort of suggested process, but I would tweak it to to, you know, to make clear that we're not going around to property owners sort of soliciting the sale of their property. I think it would be more to express that, look, we've put your property on this list. We think it could be a candidate for open space. We hope you'll let us know if you're thinking of selling it. But we don't really have any active intention today, you know, to make you an offer or anything like that. Because I just don't think we've put the money aside yet.
I would just say that that's exactly how we envision it. You know, that we're not suggesting that we go out and say, we want to buy your property. It really is just expressing that interest if they should ever be in that position. So that's exactly how OSAB feels as well.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. All really good comments so far. And thank you again to open space, to OSAB, because it has been a while since we've talked about a lot of these issues. Frankly, I'm not sure, given the sweep of these issues, we've ever quite had a meeting like this. We've had a number of these meetings with different boards that have been a little bit unusual that way. Think the, I have a few thoughts, too, I guess. On the evaluation process, I really would echo what Councilmember Heffner said. I think that that process is extraordinarily important. I saw it in action when I came out for the field trip. I commend every council member, when that comes up again, to go if they can because it's fascinating, very educational. I was not not astonished to see, but really impressed by how carefully each of the members was separately and a little together here and there evaluating each of the properties that they were going to see. And according to a rubric which had been developed, I think by Amber and hats off to her and her staff, as well as over time with different open space advisory boards. So and I I don't know that this was the Mayor Pro Tem's intention, but I think there's a lot of very objective information that ends up coming out of that. I mean, at some level, you have to sort of subjectively, you know, come up with maybe balancing of some of them because you're comparing apples and oranges frequently, right? Okay, well, we like this one. We like this one a little better because it does some of these additional things or whatever. But it's, I I was really astonished by how detailed and comprehensive the process was. And that gave me, and still gives me a lot of comfort with with the conclusions that the priorities that you're setting. with the conclusions that the priorities that you're setting for these properties are well thought out, right? They're not necessarily the choices that we would make, given all that information, right? Because it is, obviously, it's ultimately council's decisions about how to go on these things. But it's incredibly important information for us. And that, as councilmember Heffner said, is really going to be important to our process. So I would, I think that's a central function of what the, this evaluation and periodic reevaluation of these properties. I also think that you all have done a fabulous job of narrowing down the top priorities. I know that that is really hard. I know that that's really hard. And we keep saying it, we've said it for years, and we say it to every single advisory board that comes before us, is like, well, you need to kind of focus what you're wanting from us to do, because we are dealing with that cost issue and balancing a whole bunch of other things, including within open space, O and M, which is huge, huge to most of us. And I know, really important to the committee to varying extents. I mean, I know that different people have different views there. I'm convinced that there's really no reason for you to have to evaluate cost. I think it ends up probably making the process more difficult. You're gonna naturally, as I think was said, sort of think about cost issues, because you can look at a piece of property probably and say, gee, that has some development potential, especially given the zoning. And, you know, that may figure into determination. But I don't, I don't think there's any need for the cost. One of the questions was about engagement with council. I think this is good. I think that list and doing the work plan is a good way of doing it. You know, we got to remember that we've got an open space department, which is doing their own work, working with the county, and city manager, and a whole bunch of others. And you're an advisory board, and one that does an incredible amount of work. But I don't know that there's any need for, I don't see any necessary need for more engagement. I think we have gotten very good information from you. Maybe you don't feel that way, that we're giving good information or paying it close enough attention to the information we've got. But I, that's a different issue, I think, than having, you know, more engagement. I think on the policy, you know, I don't know whether there's necessarily an urgency to it. I'm not, I don't have really a strong feeling one way or another about having a policy or not. I think the message that I have heard you deliver in any event, and other council members have said this, too, is the importance of perhaps reaching out to the landowners in some way. I think the way to do that is, they open, I think it's the staff, city manager, and others that you all decide. Because this, the process of being in touch with those property owners is something that ought to be, you know, owned, quote unquote, by the city and the staff, really. It's not appropriate, in my view, for council members to be involved in those unless and until there's some kind of reason to do that. And there are some properties, and I'll say this right now, Mayor Hoffer particularly, which was an absolutely fantastic acquisition, would never have happened without Malcolm Fleming. He was absolutely central to that relationship. So, I mean, I kind of feel fairly strongly about that. You know, sort of pulling back and hearing, you know, some of these, some of the other comments of the other council members and trying to distill them a little bit. I don't hear any big objections to the evaluation process. In fact, it's your only encouragement of the way that you're doing that right now. Is that sort of a fair thumbs up agreement? Do you all agree to that? Sure.
I just wanted, I should have asked this before, but we have included lesser priority properties on that spreadsheet. Is that still helpful to you, just to have them included there?
Yeah, I think that that is.
Okay, sorry for breaking in.
It also, it's also helpful that you took up a couple completely, right?
Yeah.
And noted that. That's useful for us to know, because sometimes we go, oh, well, we could. And that's maybe not. It's good to know that, yeah. You know, I don't know whether there, you know, future engagement or there. I didn't hear a lot of discussion about needing additional engagement from council standpoint. Yes, councilmember Heffner.
I was just, I was gonna chime in on the, I think it's critical to have the low priority properties, as well as the properties that have been removed, still listed, such that if, for example, if a property that's been removed comes up for sale, it'll be really helpful to understand, oh, you know, that this had, at one point, had been a priority. It's been removed, or it was never a priority, and the reason it was a never priority is X, Y, and Z. I mean, just the more information, the better. And I don't know that I have a strong thought on the thing you just asked, Mayor, but, you know, to me, I don't think it's councils, like, I think it's OSAB's core work to make this list. I think it's one of the real big benefits we get out of having OSAB. And I don't know that we as city council need to sort of be weighing in, per se, or rearranging the list, or making, I don't know that we need a lot of two-way communication on that, if the point of the list is to provide information that will be useful in decision-making.
Very good point. Does that reflect the sense of the council here, those comments? But, yeah. There was a question about, oh, go ahead. I thought you were raising your hand to.
In, yes, both.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I agree. I think every square on that map that's white, I'm like, hmm, what's? So have you considered it and you don't want it? Or is there's reason, or it's, you know, it's like, so it's green, I know. If it's purple, I know. So there are a couple, like, I'll just admit ignorance, like, the area around the police station and courthouse, like, oh, is it, was it? Is that already, why is there no color? What color is that? You know what? I'm just missing what that is, right? And so, you can answer the question, Adam. What, you seem ready?
We already own it.
But it's just city property?
It is.
But we have no interest in that becoming open space?
That's up to you to tell me.
Well, no.
No, no.
I mean, that's what I'm saying. Like, so there's no interest.
I think they're evaluating properties that aren't currently city retained. It would be for available purchase.
Okay.
Acquisition.
Okay, fair enough. So like, it's not on the acquisition list, but again, that color, like, I had to ask that question. You're like, why is that one white? Oh, we own all of that, and we could make it open space, or we can make it something else, or a city building. We do lots of stuff, but you're like, well, we don't need to acquire it. We own it. That's why that's white, or, you know, that could be a different color. And of course, like, you're not putting parks on there, right? But that also, like, for me visually, is like, a reminder that there's a lot of green on this map that's not green, because it's white, because it's park, or it's the golf course, or it's whatever. And so, but it's like, there's a lot of undeveloped land that we're not seeing in that image. And so, I'd just say more is more in this case. Like, just being able to understand everything, so absolutely keep stuff on that you've decided not, is not a high priority, or you've dropped, or whatever. Those color codes are super helpful, and as Dietrich said, create a history so that we have information 10 years from now of like, oh, was this, it was that, was this? And now here it is today. So I just concur mostly.
Thanks, yeah, councilmember Kern.
Thanks, thank you. Yeah, I was just gonna say, the only thing that I think would be valuable, and it's maybe more of the staff input for us, is restoration and maintenance cost from the decision-making process. And so, if staff could evaluate that when that list comes, so that you, because I know we've had this conversation before when other properties came up, and it was a, okay, well, we would need a lot more time to figure that out. You guys have an hour and a half to tell us what you want us to do. So this is, I think, a great opportunity for you and Ember and the team to help us figure out what you really think are the costs to the community. We've, to councilmember Heffner's point, you know, we do have a new tax, right? But if we're allocating a fair amount of that to purchase property, we have a responsibility to use it to maintain. And we now know we have greater and more expensive maintenance cost, because four years ago, in one month, we found out one of the biggest, you know, reasons we have to restore our property or land, right? We need to reduce wildfire risk, which is good for everybody, including the things that live in that wild space. So I just, I would love to have that there. What I don't want it to do is to get us all into a sticky situation where, you know, none of us are even on the council, and people are trying to figure out, oh, my gosh, like, nobody knew that, like, that was going to cost that much, because it is more expensive where it's located to do the maintenance or something. And you guys will know. That's easy. That doesn't cost us much. And you let us know, and it makes, I think, the long-term decision a lot easier. Do you guys, I'm hoping that you all agree with that.
My own thought about that would be, I mean, number one, I do agree with that. It may be a good thing to include on the matrix, too, that sort of perspective, O and M. I mean, there may be some properties, right, that just will be wonderful open space. They are kind of a disaster right now, for whatever reason. You know, they're way overgrown, or they're this, or they're that. That's one way, pardon me? Yeah, well. Other, other aspects of this, are there other? Because I think I've hit on most of those questions. Yes, councilmember Fahy.
I just want to add on my feelings with what councillor Kern just said. The O and M of the properties is really a big part of the cost, and the reason why we should or should not purchase a particular piece. And we do have to consider fire mitigation, flooding issues, and how are we going to take care of those problems when they come again? Even hail, I mean, and we get hail pretty regularly. I know our roof has been destroyed twice since we've been here. And then the house with the fire was destroyed. So I know what these kinds of issues will impact the residents. And I would like to see some kind of partnership also come about between the city and through the open space board, I guess, and the ditch companies, and get those things cleaned out and maintained for the fire problems. But that's all things that we have to do. If we own the property, we have to take care of it. So.
There's one other issue that I maybe, I don't know if it fits neatly in here or not, which has to do with the question of meeting with other open space boards. We talked about it a little bit. I think councillor Kern expressed enthusiasm for that. I have some reservation about that. Because, and part of it is, we have with a council member assigned to, you know, sort of inter municipal or inter-community governmental relations with some of these communities. And I think, you know, there's, there, I don't know what issues might come up. I don't know who sets the agendas for those meetings, who, you know, there's a lot of stuff there that makes me wonder how coordinated it is with staff and what they're doing. You know, I know that there's, there was some discussion on the work plan about these kinds of, I don't know, meetings or relationships. I don't know how other council members feel about that. I think it's, I think it's always great to exchange information. I think what I get concerned about on those is suggesting policy, suggesting what, you know, apart from what's publicly available, what properties we might be interested in and so forth. It just gives me a little bit of a pause that way. And I know there's one, I think, coming up soon with Superior. So, you know, I presume that Ember's very much involved in that. And probably kind of trying to keep every, keeping whatever guardrails need to be kept up. And I can't imagine the board being interested in, you know, committing to things that council might not be willing to commit to. That might be a challenge. Any other thoughts about that issue from any of you in council?
I just have one comment, and that's that it was brought up that it would be important for your meetings to be recorded, so that if you can't attend, for whatever reason, or you're not available that evening or something, that you can go and watch the discussion. Because I find that listening to the discussion and seeing who said what and what their expressions were speaks volumes about how people think. The board members, the staff members, the members of the public, anyone who's coming in and saying something, it just makes a difference if you can actually see and hear what they say.
Staff, think about that issue.
I think that that's really a council policy issue. If we're going to apply it to OSAB, we need to apply it to the other advisory boards as well, so that we are recording all of the meetings. And I think right now, that's something that maybe we consider, we need to figure out from a staffing perspective, that's going to require, if it's like a Zoom meeting where the facilitator can just hit record, and then we post a Zoom meeting, that's one thing. If we're looking at more elaborate recording, then that requires additional staff. So if you could give us some time to evaluate what the impacts would be, and then we could bring that forward to, and then that's really council's decision from a policy standpoint, is if you want us to record and transcribe. The transcription thing would be a little bit concerning, because we're just doing like action plus minutes right now. And that's one of our goals, is to get all the advisory boards on the same, boards and commissions on the same level for minutes. However, you'd record through Zoom, it does do a transcription, but.
I'd like to see just a Zoom.
Maybe that's, that's part of the direction, is to give us some sense of how that might work. I think one way of distinguishing OSAB, or at least parts of what OSAB and people have do, is at least with respect to their quasi judicial functions, it might be nice to have videos of those if we can't do something broader, or it's too expensive or too complicated. But I, I'll leave that, you know, it sounds like we can leave that to the staff to come up with some thoughts about that. Yes, councilmember.
I mean, I thought that we're trying to have all of our meetings have a Zoom option, including the board meetings. So they certainly were when I was on a board, so. Yeah, it's not recorded, but.
There is, they are on Zoom, but they're just not recording them.
We don't, we don't have to reach a final decision on that, but that's a good point. So I think we've gone through, I think I've sort of summarized the stuff that we have agreed on on each of these. Do you need any further direction?
So if I could just clarify?
Yeah.
So what I heard was, no objection to OSAB's evaluation process, keep lower priority properties and properties that have been removed on the list, just for council information. Staff to provide maintenance and restoration costs for each parcel on the list. We could also look at providing acquisition costs as well. Provide council information related to costs and staff requirements for advisory boards and commissions. The one thing that I just want to clarify is related to the policy, as to whether or not council wants to move forward with formalizing a policy. as to whether or not council wants to move for forward with formalizing a policy, or if you want to keep it more informal per Councilmember Heffner's suggestion that you follow with the process, but tweak it to make it clear that we're not going around to property owners to solicit purchase of the property. It's really about establishing the relationship and expressing interest.
Formal policy or not first. Do we need to, yeah, Councilmember Cooper, or Heffner, sorry?
Yeah, I mean, I think it, I was gonna say, I think it makes sense to have it written down somewhere, whether it's called a, a policy or not. And it sounds like the, the intent I expressed was aligned with, I think, the intent of the folks who wrote it. So that, that's good enough for me. The, the one, the one thing I would add on costs is I think it's good to have like some rough numbers, you know? This one's going to need a, a lot of restoration, which is, you know, thus and such per acre, or this one's not going to need so much, which is, you know, maybe have a couple, three categories and maybe the same for O and M. This, this will be an expensive one to maintain. This one will be medium, this one will be low. I don't, I mean, I don't think we need to spend a huge amount of staff time generating detailed cost estimates on, on restoring and maintaining these. I do, I do think it'll be helpful to have a sort of back of the envelope. Like, I'd be curious to know the average cost per acre of maintaining open space. I have no idea.
I'm not hearing anything on that. Nobody's willing to quite give a hard answer to that, right? Yet.
Yeah, if you divide the total budget allocated to the Open Space Fund by our acreage, it's about $2,500.
There you go. Nice work. Yeah, and, and to clarify, I wasn't suggesting that there be like some dollar figure. Frankly, I was more suggesting like, is it a one, a two, or a three? As in, like, this is a mess, or this is going to be a walk in the park on the other end. But I, we could leave that.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Okay.
Restaurant dollar signs.
Yes, like that. Very nice. That's exactly right. All right. Yeah, I think. And then I, I think I would just encourage close communication about the meetings that are happening between municipalities. If there are those and making sure that the council member who's on the, you know, the who's working with that, who's, who's designated to have contact with on those other communities on mutual interest issues just gets informed and has knowledge about what's going on. Good. I think we're, that was a very good conversation, I think. I think that we really appreciate all the work that you all have done. It's really great. And again, I'm going to reiterate, if you haven't been on that field trip, please go. Because it's, it's, it's fun, it's informative. And I think it'll give you a lot of confidence in this process even more than I think you're hearing evidence of tonight. Thanks again. Next item is discussion, direction, action on the advance of 2026 certain nonprofit grant awards in response to SNAP benefits and the uncertainty of those. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Samah Fox, Deputy City Manager. I also want to thank Finance Director Ryder Bailey, who compiled the staff report while I was out of the office. So staff has compiled the list of the 2026 awardees for food assistance after our conversation just last week. For our nonprofit grants, a total of six awardees had something to do with food insecurity. So those are Boulder Creek Cultivate, Coal Creek Meals on Wheels, Community Food Share, Lewisville Community Food Bank, Safe House Progressive Alliance for Nonviolence, and Sister Carmen Community Center. I would note that 10,000 of the award for Sister Carmen is earmarked for utility billing assistance. So it's just important to keep in context here. We provided a communication to council with a number of options. Of course, the item we've brought forward due to tonight is to advance the 2026 amount. Council could advance that 2026 amount. Council can advance the 2026 amount and consider additional awards in 2026. You could choose to advance all nonprofit awards, or you could choose to hold them all off until the regularly scheduled 2026 post. I did get a couple of questions in advance of this meeting to consider. Our staff communication noted that Boulder County was doing some additional support. I have been waiting for a public notification of that, and just about an hour ago, we got one. Boulder County is awarding 1.15 million to four community providers to help ensure food access gaps can be filled. About 850,000 of that is going to Food Network Supporter, Community Food Share, 100,000 each to Family Resource Centers. Sister Carmen is included in those. So this is to help food banks support people in need. I also got a question about who Community Food Share partners with to provide food. We do have a representative from Community Food Share tonight, or the Senior Corporate Relations Manager Luke, I believe, is here. And then we also have a representative from Sister Carmen. Kristin is also here from Sister Carmen, who can answer some council questions if you have any questions for them. I'm thankful for them to come on such short notice. I reached out to them very late last week, so thank you very much both for being here. As I open this up for council discussion and questions, I do just want to remind you, this is an action item. So we would like your direction in the form of a motion tonight.
Thank you very much. Why don't we, are there any, first of all, any questions on the staff report in the presentation that Deputy City Managers provided? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just one little question. In our normal cycle of things, when during the year do we provide the funds to these nonprofits?
Those go out pretty early in the year. I believe February is when we would typically release that funding.
I think typically this is an area in which we would consider this the weeds, right? Like, but, you know, saying that's like, do you have a sense of, you know, of these funds you give, you know, $3,333 to Coal Creek Meals on Wheels? Is there any clear communication about how that money is utilized specifically? As in, you know, Sister Carmen have 10,000 for utility bills. Is that breakout typical, or is it usually just lump sum, do your work? Do you, you know?
Yeah, for most of our awards, it's a lump sum to do their work. And our program is pretty flexible as to what they can use the funding for. Sister Carmen is the only one that we have an earmark for.
Okay. And so, because that kind of leads to the, you know, if we're advancing this money potentially early or duplicating it, or however, to, to me, the moment is about SNAP and about food insecurity. And so, you know, I just have questions about, you know, so is Boulder County Cultivate in any way limited to using that, you know, $2,600 specifically for food? I mean, I sure they would, right? It's the kind of thing where it's like, I'm not that worried about it. But, you know, when you give a million dollars to Red Cross and you wonder like, how much of that million dollars is going to the, the thing I want it to go to versus the entire entity? How much control do we have? And so just for further conversation later, just kind of thinking about like, how much control do we or could we have on how this money is spent? Depending on who we end up giving it to. So having a little background, and we don't currently really do that. That would be new to tell them how to spend our, the money we give them. So that's helpful for later conversation. Thank you.
Any other questions right now? It may be good to just, now that we put, we brought a couple of folks here tonight special, to just get them up here and put them on the spot with a whole bunch of questions. Now, I, we're, we're pretty tame, but it might be a good thing to have the folks from Community Food Share and Sister Carmen come up in whatever order. I'll, I'll let you fight it, fight out who the, who the order is here. Okay, you're volunteering. That's a nice way of putting it.
Is this, is this computer being used for something in this moment? Can I close this? Just have some notes here, just in case we want to get into the nitty gritty. I can talk a little bit about, first of all, council members, staff, city manager, thanks so much for having us here. And gratitude, as always, to the city of Louisville for being such robust supporters of Community Food Share. As you all know, we are the Feeding America Food Bank of Boulder and Broomfield Counties. We are the one stop shop for the vast majority of rescued.
And you are?
How about that? There was one of two buttons. So just to give you an overview of the work, because the Deputy City Manager here informed me that council was interested in learning more about our work with different organizations in the county. As the Feeding America Food Bank, we support approximately, I think the number is at 46 different partner agencies in hunger relief across the area. Those organizations, including SPAN, Safe House Progressive Alliance Network, Lewisville Community Food Bank, Sister Carmen, and Coal Creek Meals on Wheels here in Louisville. And that, those distributions to our partner agencies make up about a two thirds of really the work that we do. So that's two thirds of annually what has been about 13.3 million pounds of food a year and about 60,000 unique individuals. So two thirds of our work of those numbers goes through that partner agency network. So it's a bulk majority of what we do. In this moment, one, after, you know, continuous communication, you can imagine that there has been that we've been a little stretched and responding on a daily basis to national media as well as local stories and communicating with those 46 partners as, as, as regularly as we could. 100% of our partners and our own programs are reporting increases in demand. Those increases are varying across the board from 20 to 200%. And those numbers are still evolving and that reporting is, is becoming more refined as, as time goes on. As, you know, you can imagine from the small church pantry to more robust agencies like Sister Carmen, or EFA, or Broomfield Fish. Capacities vary on, in terms of monitoring that data and, and reporting. So the need is, is, is real in here, I would say. In our pantry, we host the largest pantry in Boulder and Broomfield Counties onsite at our warehouse in Louisville, in the Colorado Tech Center. Enrollments have doubled, new enrollments have doubled. So we're getting a steady stream of new folks. Just last Wednesday, we had wait times of about 100 minutes at one point throughout the day because of the number of new folks coming to us. And our programming also includes offsite distributions, a mobile pantry program at four different sites in Boulder and Broomfield, as well as distributions to homebound seniors, which we call our Blue Spruce Neighbors Program. I was just talking with our program manager for that Blue Spruce Program, uh, Blue Spruce Neighbors Program, serving homebound seniors. And he said anecdotally that he's getting calls off the hook from seniors wanting to verify that we are operating, that they are going to get their food distributions, requesting emergency food boxes. The anxiety is super real, particularly amongst that, among that population as well right now. That's kind of the story of what's going on and happy to take questions on that. And just, you know, for overall context, SNAP, which is still in limbo, and it's, and it's difficult for me to follow the latest updates on court rulings, appeals, responses from the federal government right now. But we know SNAP benefits are still in limbo, have not been issued to local, to Boulder and Broomfield County residents. But SNAP equals about $4.5 million a month in food assistance to neighbors here. 26,000 individuals in Boulder and Broomfield County are recipients of SNAP. So certainly we heard, we heard about Boulder County's generous commitment to this moment and, and providing for food insecurity and some of the other, you know, state action around food, food assistance. But the, the gap is still huge. And I believe, and I'll have to double check this, I think we say that for every meal that food banks provides, SNAP provides nine in terms of efficiency. It's a massive, it's a massive impact the program has. So we are doing our best to meet this moment and certainly welcome any questions and the, the invitation to be here to talk a little bit more about it.
Councilmember Kern.
Thanks. So appreciate it. You know, my heart lives with your organization. I'm so grateful for all the work that everyone does and the endless number of volunteers that you have. This community is incredible, but rich with generous hearts. But I was curious to know the gap that you're seeing or the increase, especially, you know, with people coming to the food bank and the concern. There's obviously been a buildup to the, the worry that the SNAP would not be provided in November. That started in October when, when this nonsense was, sorry, when, when there was the shutdown was still going on and people thought they weren't going to get their money. These are my like restrictive comments. But anyway, point is, I was curious to know what the increase you saw you think is related to people not knowing or not receiving their SNAP benefits in November versus there's an increased need in food insecurity, which is different from an emergent right now need because people won't, and we, you know, now that the, the Senate actually has decided to move forward, open the government again, things should get rolling. It's obviously not going to be immediate, it's still probably going to take weeks. But we have a, a November food need versus is it like a bigger, we have 100% increase in the need for assisting our community members?
Can you hit that mic again?
Thank you. We, one, because we operate on a self declaration of need. So we do not have a paperwork laden process to determine eligibility. If you show up at Community Food Share and you need help, you are going to get help that day. Combined with, I think you're identifying an issue that we want to make sure resonates far longer than this immediate November crisis in that we were already facing post pandemic, on average, about a 60% increase in year over year individuals using our services. So because of household economic inflation and the cost of goods and the, in the expiration of pandemic era benefits. So we were already seeing those big needs. And then comes HR1, which is, you know, officially the largest rollback in food assistance in history, which those cuts will take place in great effect in October 26th beginning. The work requirements have already existed, have always existed for SNAP. The expansion of those and the reduction of exempted populations for that already began. So when this crisis hit a few weeks ago, shutdown wise, the outlook was already bleak in food banking and food assistance, I would say, and really uncertain in really what we're going to see, particularly October 2026 on, as we know, replicating or replacing that funding gap. That reduced federal commitment is going to be especially tough in Colorado based on our own difficulties with, with tax increases in the state. So I would say there was an existing context. And we also know there are lots of folks who are coming to us in an emergency fashion because of the shutdown in November. But I would, I would hesitate to put an exact ratio or number on it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions of Luke at the moment? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
We may recall you.
Yes, yes, I'll be here.
You're still under subpoena. Go ahead.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm Kristin Bohannon. I'm the Chief Development Officer at Sister Carmen Community Center. Thank you for inviting me tonight, and we truly appreciate the city's responsiveness in considering distributing funds earlier this year to address the crisis. I just want to say real quick, for those unfamiliar with our work who might be listening, that Sister Carmen Community Center is a family resource center. We're nonreligious and our mission is to provide assistance to residents of Lafayette, Louisville, Superior, and Erie, who are in need without discrimination. And one of the ways that we do that is through our food bank. I will say, we've seen very similar things. So while SNAP delays and the federal shutdown have intensified need, what we're seeing really isn't new. Demand has steadily been rising for the last few years. Food bank visits have actually grown 67% in the last three years total since 2022. So similarly, since pandemic era assistance ended, we saw a really sharp rise between 22 and 23, and that has only continued to grow. Additionally, we have seen a more sharp spike in recent weeks. We saw a 21% jump in daily visits from early October to now. Average visits a day, and when we say visit, we mean a family has come through and come to shop, have gone from about 67. to shop, have gone from about sixty-seven visits a day to eighty-one visits a day. And last week, there were a few days that we saw almost a hundred families through our doors. We have been in recent weeks been asking folks if they're affected by SNAP. Generally, we don't ask too many of those personal questions, but we have been wondering about that ourselves. About sixty percent of individuals visiting report being directly impacted by SNAP delays or the federal shutdown in some way. One thing to keep in mind for those who aren't familiar with food banks and SNAP is that a lot of recipients of SNAP already might be visiting our food banks. So SNAP doesn't necessarily cover enough of a family's needs. And depending on how much they're struggling and how much is happening, they may also be getting, coming to us or Community Food Share or other assistance places in order to supplement what they have. For Louisville specifically, Sister Carmen typically sees about four hundred households each year for food alongside many of the other households from surrounding communities. So while receiving funds earlier would certainly help us with our immediate pressures, and we very grateful for that consideration. I know for us, we do or are very aware that this is not just a short term crisis. It's our new normal. Rising housing and food costs combined with reduced benefits and federal cuts mean that families are struggling year round. So while we do appreciate the short term interest, we also know that increase in sustained funding long term would help us better keep pace with the level of need we're seeing in the community. That being said, we're deeply thankful for city council for calling attention to this issue and for considering the needs of our low income neighbors. We really appreciate that, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions, councilmembers, yes. Repetitive.
Because we have the utility portion with you guys, can you talk at all about what you're, what you're seeing on that front change over year recently? I know they're tied together, obviously, you know, families' financials are closely tied, so.
Yeah, so overall for, I think that one's for water utility specifically, and I don't have that, those percentages top of mind. However, I know that we have been seeing similarly increased requests from families needing more assistance overall. So the one stat that comes to mind is our program director told me recently that approximately fifty percent of the requests that we receive for financial assistance, whether that's rent or utilities or other needs, we have to say no fifty percent of the time. So, you know, we try to do what we can help people, but it's, it's what we're able to distribute to the community as a small local nonprofit, as we said, is not near amount that the government can do. So it's, it's a struggle. So for something like this, for example, the utility assistance, we still need the funds for utility assistance. So it makes it kind of hard. If we get it earlier and you earmarked it for food instead, great, but also then we still need the funds for utility assistance. So for us, it's still coming this year is the honest truth.
Questions? Yep.
So you kind of, kind of alluded to the, you know, there's an obvious need, right? It's just, and it's so sad that it's just always and endlessly happening. But if, if the funds were just given to you, like the amount that's allotted for twenty-six early, does that have the intended value or is it more that you're just going to run short toward the end of next year then?
Pretty much the same, yeah. For us, it's actually the same fiscal year. So we're getting it a few months early and the portion that's general operating, like if we suddenly needed to buy more food or if we suddenly needed to pay more hours for staff or our truck broke, our freezer went out earlier this year, we, all those things, then it does help us to have that quicker. But honestly, it doesn't make a huge, huge difference in the year for us.
And you mentioned that fifty percent of the people who come to you for general assistance, so with everything, not just coming to the pantry, that you're having to decline providing for them. Is that fifty percent of the Louisville residents who come to you have to be declined?
So, no, so that's of us overall. So, and actually, let me correct that. So fifty percent of the direct financial assistance requests we get, we aren't able to fulfill. So that's out of the amount, I believe, the number of people. But, yeah. I don't know if that's quite answering your question. So for Louisville specifically, that number is referring to all of the people that we serve, not Louisville specifically. But other than very specific funds, like the utility assistance for Louisville, generally, most of our direct financial assistance funds for rent and all these things, we don't have like earmarked specifically for Louisville or specifically for Lafayette.
Even, even with the funds that the city of Louisville donates to you?
No, for those ones, we do have that earmarked, yeah.
Okay, so if that were to, like, if that ten thousand were to increase next year?
Then we would be able to spend it on more Louisville residents.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yep.
Actually, maybe a question for Luke. Kind of the same question that was just asked, you know, how much of a difference does it make to, you know, provide these funds in advance of when they would usually come next year?
I would echo similar to what Kristen said, but I will say that any, any funds provided now allows us to be more flexible and responsive to the moment and going forward. And I would say that, just from my experience, my past year and a half and having worked in several different nonprofits, the fiscal stewardship at Community Food Share is expert. And whether, if those funds are provided now, they will be stewarded in a way that we are better able to meet, again, the backdrop of increased need that we're going to see for unfortunately, what looks like years to come at this point, so.
Thanks for not sitting down. And maybe both of you should keep standing up here. One question that came up, what had to do with the relationship between the two of you, between the two organizations, right? That Sister Carmen, as I understand, receives food assistance, its support for food assistance from, from Community Food Share. Is that, is that right or is it just a percentage?
Yeah, so we receive some food of our food assistance from Community Food Share. I'm forgetting the exact percentage, but I think it's somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent of the food that we get in. We distribute about one point four million pounds of food. A lot of that comes from community food drives, from food rescue resources and whatnot. But additionally, we also partner very closely with Community Food Share as well, so.
And I might just add a little bit more context to what Kristen's saying, because last year FY twenty-five numbers, we are a July to June fiscal year, we distributed nineteen fifteen, oh, sorry, excuse me, nine hundred fifteen thousand pounds of food to Sister Carmen. And for FY twenty-six, for these first months, we are at three hundred and ninety-two thousand pounds of food. So one of our top ten partners in terms of distribution. And can give other context of other partners if that's helpful.
Thanks.
Where, where do you get your food?
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great question, Councilmember Fahy. So the thirteen point three million pounds of food that we get annually, eighty-five percent roughly historically, has been donated in rescue food. So donated and rescued, meaning donated from, from Big Ag, from manufacturers, from wholesalers. Again, being part of the Feeding America Network means that we have access to relation, nationwide relationships with, with food producers of every kind. But rescued, meaning that we have a team of four drivers going out daily to every retailer in, nearly every retailer in Boulder and Broomfield, some we allocate directly to partner agencies. But those rescue, retail rescue operations are bringing in about fourteen thousand pounds daily to the organization. So eighty-five percent of thirteen point three million pounds annually is rescued and donated. Historically, another about seven to eight percent is government commodity foods through the Emergency Food Assistance Program or the, or CSFP, the Commodity Supplemental Food Program, which aids seniors specifically. And the last seven to eight percent is purchased by us at bulk or wholesale rates or procured through Feeding America's auction system, where we can bid on shipments from around the country. From farms. Our farm, our farm sadly went on pause in this past, in late twenty twenty-four, as we are actually on the look for a new property for the farm. We were tenant, we were leasing some land that was very generously leased to us for very small rate, but really looking to own our own piece of property potentially in the future, where we can have exclusive land rights over that. And our farmer who had been with us from the beginning also had to transition a life and took off. So we used that moment to kind of reevaluate our farming program, but we're hoping to get back to it, Councilmember Kern.
Okay, any other questions? Why don't we take a public comment here? Do we have anybody seeking public comment? Public comment, okay. You all can relax now. See, we weren't so bad, right? Councilmembers, and you've seen the, well, this is very useful. I want to provide one piece of information, just because I did some research this afternoon with my better half, who is litigating some of these issues against the federal government right now. The, long story short, there's an order that is now being directly appealed to the U.S. Supreme Court for action because the administration still wants to deny that food assistance, at least until they decide that they want to, if they choose to, restore it. So things are still up in the air, even this afternoon. I just looked online to see that there's a, that the Senate has put together a thirty-one page bill, which is supposedly the thing that at least the senators have agreed on, but that's going to be up for votes tomorrow, I think, at least in the House. And there's more wrangling to be done about that. One of the things that my wife mentioned from talking to state agencies that are dealing with this right now is that whatever happens, it's going to be a long time before all of this gets resolved. That is to say, damage has already been done, significant damage. You don't just go, all right, that's over with, turn on the faucet, it goes to all the places where it needs to go and everybody's cool. That's not the way it works ever. This is sort of unprecedented. So for whatever it's worth, the other council members, that's, that's a little bit of additional information in dealing with these questions. So, yes, Councilmember Heffner.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'd like to move that we advance the twenty twenty-six amounts for the organizations listed in the staff memo. I think it's a sort of modest thing we can do to maybe put a little more ballast in the boat during a stormy period. I mean, I, I don't think we should be deluded into thinking thirty-two thousand dollars is going to make a huge difference in the grand scheme of things, but I think it's what we can do that's actionable right now, and I think we ought to.
I would second that. Other discussion? Yes, Councilmember Kern?
I'd recommend too that we seriously consider increasing our, and I know this is going to be a broader discussion for the budget for twenty-six. It seems like there's a greater need than we, than we thought about. It is not just an immediate need. I mean, I would almost offer that this funds goes for the immediate need instead of just an advancement.
Are you offering that as a friendly amendment or just an item for future consideration?
I think the budget discussion is for future discussion. I, and I think that we need to think about the comments from Sister Carmen, and I think the, the funding and the earmarking specifically to Louisville residents is probably what should be increased versus just overall funding going to the organizations so that we're making sure that, that we're, like, that we're helping the financial needs of Louisville residents and that there, that we don't have people that are turned away because there's, there's lack of financing for them. So I'd love for us to discuss that. Does that make sense? When Kristen was saying, she was saying that there were people that were being Louisville residents, maybe not at the same percentage, but that were being denied the direct financial assistance and some of the funds, only the ten thousand right now are specifically allocated to assist Louisville residents. So my, my interest would be next year that we talk about that and, and increasing the amount to help Louisville residents specifically from the taxpayer dollars. But I, my, my personal opinion, given it's, it probably, at a minimum, it's going to be through this month and who knows into December, to your point, Mayor, as far as how long people are going to have unknown amounts of assistance for food, that we don't advance this, we just increase this year's contributions to these food centers by these amounts.
And that isn't, well, oh, I think that may be an alternative to what Councilmember Hefner says. If you want to frame it as, you can either frame it as a friendly amendment or you can frame it as a substitute motion, but I, I, I'm not sure it's the same thing. Why don't, why don't we go back to the?
You're correct, it's not the same thing.
Okay, so you're, are you offering a substitute?
I'll offer a substitute motion.
Okay, is there a second for the substitute motion?
Second.
Okay. Any comments on the substitute motion? Oh, go ahead, Councilmember.
A question about it. So did you mean to include the ten thousand for utility? Just going to be clear.
Yes, Councilmember Hefner.
I, I was just going to offer to clarify the original motion and say, I, I think what I heard Councilmember Kern say the first time around was, let's, let's talk about twenty twenty-six in twenty twenty-six and like, may, you know, we're going to do this money now, let's talk in twenty-six about whether to, to do it a second time in twenty-six, which makes sense to me. I, I don't have strong feelings about making that decision now, if that's what the substitute motion is intended to do.
Yeah, sort of. The substitute motion was intended to take these dollar amounts with the, not the ten thousand, but the, just the food amount, give it to the organizations now to help in a, in a very moment of dire need. And in twenty-six, we do reevaluate these contributions and look at the, the new and increased need in our community specifically related to increasing the funding that goes to Sister Carmen directly to help Louisville residents. So the ten thousand?
That's, that's.
That's fine. So again, a clarification, are we, are we suggesting that we're providing twenty-two thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars now with a, a understanding that we're going to decide whether it goes up or down and, and that we're not advancing the ten thousand for utility billing?
My motion, my motion is to do exactly what's listed in that table, including the, including the utility now.
Sorry. Yeah, are you offering yet another substitute motion? I mean, that's kind of what it sounds like.
May I kind of make a suggestion when we get back to talking? As opposed to trying to figure out which language question? Because I think if we get the intention right, then we can restate the motion and, and so.
That's fine, we got two things, separate things, right?
Right. So I think there's the two questions. One is, should this be additional or just an advance? And I think what I'm hearing is that this should be additional. And so if we agree it's additional, then, then the question to staff is, is it easier to call this an advance of something that's already been approved and then we will deal with next year's allotment? Or is it easier to say, this is a whole separate thing we're doing today, we're giving an amount, but for simplicity, let's give it in, you know, similar proportions? Like, is there, is there anything that's better or worse in that regard?
You know, talking to Ryder earlier today, I think if it were provided now, I think that either way, it's going to require some type of budget amendment. I think that either way, it's going to require some type of budget amendment, prob- probably so. I don't think it creates more work one way or the other.
Great. So, so I'd suggest without a motion, I'd suggest that it's, it's duplicative or additional that you can, that they, these organizations should still plan on receiving this in February, regardless of what we do tonight. What we're doing is in addition to your point of reevaluating next year's, well, in 2025, we're giving them potentially double what we gave them in 24. So maybe that, you know, helps our conversation in 26, is that something we want to keep doing or not, or twice here and said once here, kind of thing? Then the separate conversation seems to be, are we trying to double the utility benefit as well or not? And so I hear yes and no, and no. So I think that's the separate just issue of whether or not, whether or not we're intended to duplicate the utility benefit.
All right. So yeah, go ahead, councilmember Heffner.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to ask that we vote on the original motion. The, the point of doing this fast is to do it fast. And the time to talk about 26 budget for this program, I think, is not tonight. And rather than try and figure out next year's spending in advance, let's get this money out the door. Talk again sometime next year in the beginning of next year about, are we going to duplicate this? Is it going to go up? What are the options on the table? So I, I would just ask that we, we vote on the, on getting this money out as an advance and revisit next year, what we're going to do next year.
Okay, let's do that.
So again, the alternate motion is rather than considering it an advance, which means there is no money left for next year by an advance, this would instead be an additional payment right now to help fit an emergency need. The 2026 funding would continue on, it's not being advanced, it's just still, this is, this would be an additional payment. So we can talk between now and February about what we would want to do for 26 and changing the amount of contributions in 26 is my suggestion.
I, I thought that that's what you're suggesting, councilmember Heffner, is that not? You want, you want the thing to be advanced.
I, I don't particularly care so much about the semantics. I would like to push this money out the door and I'd like to talk at some point in the future about exactly how much more money we're going to give in 26. That I, to me, it's premature to try and have that, that reach a decision on that right now.
We're all in agreement. I think the only thing we're in disagreement about, Dietrich, is whether to do the $10,000 utility or not. And so councilmember Kern's motion, the alternate motion is to do 32 or $22,166. So every dollar, but not the 10,000 utility.
And it's not an advancement, it's a payment now.
Understood.
All right, and that's the motion seconded. So all, let's see, all in favor?
Of what?
Of Judy's motion, because she, she made a substitute motion. Did make the substitute motion.
Sir, we're, we're voting to substitute the motion on the table is what you're saying.
Yes.
We're, we're voting on Judy's.
You have to vote, you have to vote to, to take up the substitute motion before you can vote on the substitute motion.
All right.
I substituted, I'm seconded. Okay.
Taking, taking the substitute motion. All in favor of? You're asking, say it again.
We have to vote to remove his motion, maybe.
No, no, so he made a motion, it was seconded, there's an alternate motion, it was seconded. We can vote on that second, that alternate motion is my understanding.
Is that not yours, Dietrich?
You have to vote to, you have to vote to actually substitute the motion on the table. You have to, to vote to change the thing being discussed. And then we can discuss the substitute motion, then we can vote on it.
Right.
I thought we did.
All in favor of?
Discussing the second motion.
The substitute, voting on the substitute motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then let's vote on the substitute motion.
So I'll just say, so the substitute motion is to make an immediate contribution, $22,166 to the grantee awarded in the staff memo and has zero impact on the 2026 contributions.
That you're standing.
It is.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I really hope it helps.
We will expect a budget amendment at some point to deal with this additional. And I presume because we're, we're expediting this payment, that those substantive, or excuse me, the budget amendment will come fairly soon before the end of the year.
I, I believe that, because we have some other items that are going to require a budget amendment. And so it may actually fall early part of next year that council is approving it.
Good. Leave that to you. All right. The, the next item, I'd want to do a time check, it's 8:17. There is, we have on our, on our agenda discussion direction of the 2026 city council work plan. We've got discussion direction on upcoming agenda items and identification of new ones. We can take a break right now of like five minutes and come back. Fair enough? All right.
Thank you. I, I'm confused as to the extent of the conversation for the, this, this draft city council work plan.
Well, we can take that up in five minutes. I want to take a break right now. So we're broke from, we're broke for five minutes. All right, we do not see councilmember Heffner, but we understand he is there.
I'm here.
There he is. Okay, there are two additional items on. And I understand we certainly have, there's, there's a couple of things going on. One thing that's going on is that we are likely to finish the work plan discussion, starting with the end in mind in February, after we have the ELT discussion. So there's a question about whether we have this discussion or, you know, move, advance the ball, which we can tonight, or we can put it over for another day. So what is the sense of the council? We don't have councilmember Hamilton here, that's, though we keep things moving usually. Regardless, but the urgency of it is a little bit less because of the changing of the timing. Yes, councilmember Heffner.
Yeah, I for one would like to have my Ward Three colleague for the work plan. I also think we're, we're moving sort of slow tonight and I'm worried it's going to take a lot longer.
I hundred percent concur.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I'd like to understand from staff the implications of, of punting this or bumping this or, or just not doing this round of it. Like, help me understand.
So it's not that we won't be doing this round. We've, what we've discussed is because we're going to have the council ELT retreat on February 10th. We have more time to have this discussion, so it could even be deferred to January in terms of consideration of different council members' requests and then get ELT input at that February 10th workshop and then finalize the work plan after that. It's not like because we don't have an adopted work plan prior to 2026, that all project activity is going to stop. It's just a matter of, I think it's important to get ELT input on the finalized work plan. And we're all very excited about the retreat with council on February 10th.
Okay, thumbs up for postponing. All right, we'll postpone that matter. So next is discussion direction of upcoming agenda items and identification of new ones. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor members of council. I can put these up on the screen if you'd like, but in your packet, you have information on the next two months of council meetings. These are the items we have coming up. We've added a little bit more information since the last meeting where we discussed this, including a budgetary impact. I think that's something we're looking at refining going forward and we'll open it up for any questions or comments.
I would like to note on the, the budgetary impact. You know, council at the last meeting that we discussed this requested that we put an approximate amount. I will say that caused staff some anxiety because we don't want to be held to these numbers as some of them are preliminary. We have different ideas as to how this could be conveyed. Per Mayor Potem Dickinson's previous comment about the restaurant dollar signs. Or we could have a legend where it equates to as, you know, a range of dollar amounts, just so you can get an idea of the range, but we're not tying it to a specific dollar amount.
Yeah, maybe on something like this, one suggestion I might make is that you do a footnote that just indicates that or some kind of disclaimer. Because I think that's really what we're, you know, we're, we see the utility. I think council sees the utility of looking ahead. I don't think council wants to keep, you know, hold staff's feet to the fire on estimates that are going to probably shape up in some way between now and then. Is that fair to say for council? Yes, councilmember Heffner.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I think that approach is fine where it's, you know, some, some new item, where it's an item that's in our budget and has a, a budgeted amount. I see no harm in, in reproducing in this document, a budgeted amount that, that already appears in the budget. I mean, we all know those numbers are, you know, they're educated guesses, but they're not intended to be exact.
Staff, thoughts about that? Is everybody on council comfortable with that approach? Okay, I see a lot of head nodding. As we're looking at those, the way we did this the last time was just, I think the city manager walked through each one of these, or, you know, like each meeting generally. I don't know that we need to do that, but we can proceed by exception if there are items that people have questions about or concerns about, concerns about the timing, either too early, too late. Does anybody have any? Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
Yeah, one question. So the Coal Creek Village first reading, just based on the description where it says the first reading for rezoning, and then the second reading will also include the plat and PUD and SRU. Is there a reason why we wouldn't get all those things at the first reading?
So the staff report will have discussion of all items. But the, because it's first reading just for the rezoning, that's why it's on the agenda. So you don't really have two readings of the PUD. So we're trying to separate and meet the, what would be a more standard process.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Fee?
No, I just have a question for you. Is when are we going to do the interviews with council?
Yes.
For the board?
Oh, you need to press your, your off.
We need to set a day for the mayor and I to do the interviews of the applicants for all the boards and commissions and so that we can report on the 18th what our recommendations are.
I think we're not, well...
December 8th and 9th.
Oh, December 8th and 9th?
Yes.
We're working through the... The interviews themselves are council interviews. The review of the resumes and stuff is what you're talking about.
Okay.
Which we'll need to do soon.
That's when the interviews are going to be. Okay.
Like in the next week, hopefully, if you're available.
Okay.
There are fewer, interestingly, fewer applicants this time, like 28 is my understanding, roughly. Is that correct?
Mayor, we have approximately 38 openings. Last Friday, I had less people than there were openings, so we did open it up through the weekend again. I did get a couple more applications, so we're probably going to break even.
That's an interesting way of putting it. But yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I think one of the questions is, you know, giving people time and advance notice about the, about the interviews. The harder we work sooner, the longer we can give them, you know, in terms of notice. So if we can do it in the next week, yeah.
Just as a point of clarification, Mayor, every applicant acknowledges that they could be interviewed on either the 8th or the 9th, so they do already have advance notice that they may need to be available those evenings.
Good for you. Thank you for doing that for us.
The 8th or the 9th of December? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm still, I'm fine doing it this week if you're, strike while the iron is hot here. We can do that. And, but I very much appreciate the clerk's good thinking on that, so, great. So we ought to be able to provide you with the list next Tuesday-ish? And then go forward there. Right? Okay. Anything else on, yeah. Yes, Mayor Potem?
I figured to say, we have the 2026 Council Work Plan adoption on January 6th. We'll assume you'll bump, or that might be the item of today.
That could be the item of today.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that would make sense to me.
I am, depending upon what happens with Coal Creek Village, the discussions between the developer and the neighboring, the neighborhood, I am a little bit concerned about how long that item could take. And so we will continue to evaluate that. And then the Pro's Long Range Plan and Trails Master Plan consultant update could take some time as well. And so, you know, that 2026 Council Work Plan adoption may move a little bit in January, depending upon...
That may not be the right date.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. So you'll come back with, in December, when we have the same conversation, we might see where tonight's item has found its place in January. Okay, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. All right. Do you have anything to add?
Another question.
Okay.
The Art Center sign, when we last discussed that, we talked about trying to get some community input. Just wondering, will that be part of that discussion coming? Or?
Yes. So I know that they did a survey, and actually, even though council, I believe, gave the go-ahead to proceed with the sign, they decided to go the route that all other applicants are required to follow in Louisville. And so they've gone through the process. They're scheduled for Planning Commission this week, and we've already received a comment from a neighbor related to it. And so this will come forward to council.
Okay. Any other questions? Questions, comments on the list? I don't see any hands online from Councilmember Hefner. All right, do we have motion?
So moved.
Nope. You have to make the motion.
I move that we adjourn. And thank you for a good night.
Second.
Second?
I did, I seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Bye.
Any opposed?